I'm going to call the work session to order a half an hour late at 2:30. Patty, would you please do a roll call?
Bob Hagan.
Here.
Don Klein.
Here.
Karen McLean.
Here.
Craig Harris.
Here.
Marissa McLure.
Here.
Patty Sargent.
Here.
Susan Lloyd.
Here.
And George, deferring zoning administrator.
Here.
All present in the panel.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda.
Both.
Also move.
Second.
All in favor of accepting the agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda accepted. Okay. We, the purpose of the workshop is to discuss ordinance amendment suggestions that we've gathered to date. And as a format for discussing them, I put them in this suggested amendments by category. It's two pages. If you all will get that out. Okay. You also have all the comments that were recorded from the public hearing. That's in a little bit smaller print and at the top it says December 20th, public hearing comments. We have, in bigger print, two page, is the, again, you've received this before, but this is the amendments that we've been working on prior to the public hearing. You also received a copy of the email from Melissa Lorenz and Bill Diddy. And another, that's a two-page, and then a one-page from Fred Drakis. And I have to go into my black bag and get out the whole stack of them. Okay, would someone please volunteer to take Melissa Lorenz's email and compare it to the suggested amendments by category?
Oh, I'll do it because that will be fresh in my head as I'm going through it now.
Okay. Would someone please take Fred Drakis's email?
All right.
You got that? Okay.
Yeah, I've got it here.
Yeah. Don?
Yeah?
Can you take this one? I can't, I don't know who this is from. It's the one we gathered in an envelope. Okay, and check it against our list to make sure we've got. We're receiving a lot of the, oh, here's the cover, I'm sorry now. It's David Picard. White Lake Area Climate Action Council has some questions. They don't put it in the form of a suggestion, but I'll give this to Karen. Can you look at this, compare it to?
The master.
The master copy there, yep. And see if those are addressed. Okay, so...
He wants us to write in any extra ones on these suggested comments?
Thank you, yeah. You see one that doesn't fit in there? And, I mean, this one says, "What will happen to the deer?" That's a question. I'm going to say that's addressed by our?
Corridor.
Wildlife corridor.
Corridor.
Corridor, thank you. And the environmental impact statement, or, yeah, environmental impact study. So can I just hand these out? Well done.
I need them all back.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything I've just handed you needs to go back to?
Patty.
You've already got two. Well, one really, because what was your own friends? Oh my goodness.
You mean the, Patty, you mean the things, the statements back there, people's names on them? That's what you're talking about?
Anything that came in as a letter?
This is a huge one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think you have those copies.
This is a huge one.
I haven't scanned them yet.
You want this done when?
No.
No?
This is our work session. Yes, this is what we're here for. Okay, here we go. Here's two short ones for you. There's spreads right there.
I'm looking at spreads right now.
Oh, you have two copies?
Yeah.
Nope, 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 nope. This, this is, this is our working document today, okay? Everything else is geared toward making this complete. Does that make sense, Don? So if there's anything in here that's not in here in some way or another, write it down or circle it on here and give it back.
Somebody called me too, and I don't remember who it was, but told me that, and this is something that I didn't know, that there were cast wells on one of the farms.
Well, it just says considerable.
Cast oil wells?
So, what do you think?
And that they're capped off, that I didn't know about. And I filled in the FOIA. I didn't know. Mike, do you know anything about that?
Well, we've had, after a hundred years, they say there's cast wells on regions.
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, you know, if I don't know, I don't know.
They asked me, they asked me, when they asked me about it, I don't know. I mean, they've never.
Require large.
There was evidence of it.
Okay.
They were just cast wells, was it water well particularly?
No, they said they were oil wells.
Well, somebody at midnight had that over.
Somebody called me and said, "So what happens if they hit one of those capped oil wells?" And I'm like, "What capped oil wells?" And they said, "Well, they're in there." And I said, "Where?"
Well, if it's an oil well, they go down, I don't know, I think. I have one on my property, but it's in the woods.
Oh, in the woods.
They say they're full cement and deep.
Okay.
Deep cap. We never go by.
Good to know it's in the woods. You know, I felt like I was in the dark.
Yeah, Patty, there's a, Michigan has a nice website showing all the wells.
Oh, do they?
Yeah.
Can I, can I sign that to you to get me that well?
It's been several years since I've looked at the other.
I appreciate your help.
I'm going to.
Thank you.
Yeah, he took. This is the same person, so I gave it to you.
Okay.
So you might find some similarities. So just put, there are setbacks. You can just add that, because that didn't say specifically. We've received a lot of comments that are not actual suggestions. So we're going to start another round and kind of screening them for suggestions.
So this one is saying, "How long has the board been working on this?"
We don't need to filter that.
Okay.
That's not an amendment suggestion. I don't know if you can glue everything up there.
Do you have another letter for me to review?
Yep.
Oh, cute.
Yeah, now I'm going through the earlier ones that basically just say, "Yeah," or "No suggestion."
All right, I'm putting a little check in the corner.
Good idea. See what Patty did? That'd be a good idea. Put a little check mark when you reviewed your assignment here.
I can take this off.
I'm going to give you this one too.
All right.
Two minutes.
All right, Patty, thank you.
And I think I'm getting down to some more copies.
Okay. Oh. If, if it's on here, I would just put a check on here. So that, that shows that most of our people have requested the same thing. And then put a check.
That was the same phone first.
This is a different person. Now this is Bruce.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Does anybody have the bandwidth?
Don't. This is from a conversation.
One thing I can tell you is people love it here.
Maybe you all out there could like plan some social event while you're here together. Maybe a summer pig roast or something?
Just a silent meeting?
No, yeah, we're not taking public comments. We're just working.
Silent meeting.
Oh, you don't mean to talk to you. Okay, I got it.
Do people have home births too?
Yeah, we're good. So I didn't do it.
I mean, yeah, I might as well. I'll just keep rolling. And then, so, you know, yours is a better word than mine. I'm making changes on yours. So I can, instead of these scribble scrabbles, I can type them up. My scribble scrabbles, you can have it. You know, I put the money behind. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I think we're probably going to get further than that today.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Like, for instance, this person isn't saying, making a suggestion, but the concern is about the size of it.
Right.
We've already got that.
Yeah.
Of the size.
You know, all of our ideas of wording is, I don't think it's correct.
Transcendence of course of moratorium. Is that a quiz or are you asking because you don't know?
That's, that's my question.
Okay.
No, no, I'll write the comments exactly, but I won't leave it to anybody.
No, that's okay. For public hearing purposes, it doesn't matter if you live in a township or not. By law, we are vowing to take all comments.
I'm taking some.
Um, those are, I've already gone through. They're like copies or?
Lucky, lucky, lucky. How about the ones underneath this?
That is, those just say, "No," or they are.
Obvious.
Yeah, here's one that might have some suggestions.
It's got some beef.
String link starts with.
Yeah. Yeah, good.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah. This one suggests that we put this in Arizona.
Okay. I think that's maybe why we have this, that one person.
The big negotiator?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I was going to write down here why, because I wondered what that meant.
Mm-hmm, I do too.
Does somebody have the ordinance, um, that was sent to us about, um, protecting private property rights? Not rights, um, valuation, yes. Does somebody have that?
Hi, Mike.
In those data?
Yeah.
Did you have it?
No, I didn't print it off. It came as an email.
If it came in an email, I can print it?
Yeah, it's forwarded as an email. If you need me to look for it, I can do that. It came from one of you guys. It came from your work, too.
Okay.
You forwarded, you forwarded it from the person who sent it.
Okay, I didn't hear that.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything.
When do we get, when do we get to the, um, actual writing of the language?
Well, suggestions for the writing of the language, because we won't actually write the language.
Right, right. How badly we may want to...
No, yeah, no, I don't think we can logically, no.
Or...
For sure.
Okay. People, most of them don't... I'm open to suggestions how to proceed. I have a big paper out and markers. Or we can use the suggested amendments by category and, um, work from there.
Yeah, we could do that and bring up the ones that we feel were most repeated, perhaps. Or strike us in some way for whatever reason.
Hey, Bob, are you, are you ready to proceed?
Sure.
Okay. All righty, so if we go to the suggested amendments by category, that first page, page one, referencing the master plan, I believe is what is done at the very beginning of the zoning ordinance? So it is definitely something to keep in mind, but I don't know if we have to actually state it again as an amendment. Yeah, it's on page one dash one of the zoning ordinance, references that, so. Are we okay with, with dropping that?
Yeah, it's referenced already.
Okay. Um, number two?
I don't think we can do that.
I can.
Yeah, okay.
We can't do it.
Yeah. Number three?
I think that, isn't that linked?
Um, no.
I kind of thought from the video that it could be either way.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely, you know, number two, they said, but number three?
Yeah.
Because they're talking about, and that's true, so.
Yeah.
Oh, is it, yeah?
And they talked about an overlay?
Yeah, I like, I like that concept. We already have an overlay district. We have the critical dune overlay.
Uh-huh.
And that is real easy for us because the state of Michigan designated the critical dune areas in the state. So we can introduce that idea of doing an overlay. Want to come back to that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a couple of suggestions that'd be placed in an industrial zone.
Yeah, that's what I had, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So then...
Change it to an industrial zone. Um, that, uh, da-da-da-da-da, pretty much... Yeah, because we already say that it can't be in residential.
Right.
So dropping the allowed in agriculture would be a definite amendment. Um, number four? Well, I don't know. Do you want to pursue that number three?
I like the overlay, you know, thing myself, but... You know, maybe we'll talk to the overlay.
As a tool to, of confining or limiting?
Making it, as requested, making it a smaller.
Okay, so we'll, we will, we will ask our consultant about that.
Yeah.
Um, number four, I don't think we can do by law.
I, I kind of would agree with that.
Um, number five? I just read a comment about using a process called sightline analysis and, and basing screenings on sightline analysis, which is an interesting concept. I don't think we have discussed that per se. Um, numbers... Excuse me, number six, sir, anything that you all found that adds to that?
Um, a couple of the letters I had, they had exact suggestions of what they'd like to see.
Okay, like, um...
Like, they would like a berm that's five feet high, twenty feet wide, with, um, plantings on top of the berm, one of them, and then another, one of my letters said, "Consider larger trees interrupts to provide immediate privacy." So those two things were rec, were suggested.
I'm replacing hardwoods, as I mentioned a couple of times.
Yeah, yeah, um, yeah.
Hardwoods aren't, are only dense at the top.
I don't... Does it take a long time to get that in?
Indecisuous, indecisuous, it's only gonna be summertime.
Right, right, right.
Too true, even when they are.
You know, Chair, you know, if we could move back to number five there.
Yeah?
You know, I'm not sure that's really a viable thing. I mean...
Not in a rolling landscape.
Well, not yet, but realistically, in Michigan, you don't have a right to the view over your neighbor's land.
Correct, we do not have that. Like, some towns, like Santa Fe, has, um, an ordinance where you can't block your neighbor's access to solar for, you know, so that you can have solar energy at your home. Your neighbor can't block it with anything.
Well, in our ordinance, the only, the only views that are protected are on water.
Um, well, yeah, for sightline.
Yeah, sightlines, that's the view.
Right, right. And the, and the reverse from the water, looking at the property, we have some restrictions on that, too.
Yeah, we've had houses that were cutting into sightlines and they had to either go in back or adjust the size or whatever, so.
So thank you, Craig, for bringing that up, that, yeah. Can't really do that, but we can, um, minimize it as much as we can.
Oh, I agree, but, I mean, just to, you know...
Yeah. Okay, um, so we have some specific suggestions for both berms and the plants used for screening purposes. And then, um, we already had the suggestion to create standards for the berms used in screening to ensure effectiveness, so that all kind of goes together there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, number eight, require large setbacks from non-participating properties. Um, I know we got a lot of comments and a range of setback suggestions, yeah? Yeah, we were suggesting six hundred feet with, um, and that's the industry standard.
I had this one person that wrote, um, twelve fifty feet setback, yeah. I don't know where that was from.
Yeah.
This document they made had to do with a prepared solar ordinance. And one of the comments that they made was setbacks that need more than one hundred feet, minimum two hundred fifty feet. Other sites say six hundred feet is standard. Other documents suggest one thousand feet is preferred.
Yeah, so there's definitely a range.
I guess my only suggestion would be whatever setback we decide on, that we do it from the property line.
Yeah. And I think that was one of the changes we had made in our suggestions, maybe, you know, when we were working on...
On the property line, then at the residential.
Yeah, well, we had said a hundred feet for the property of a non-participating, so we wanted to consider changing that to six hundred now.
And it should be from standing water to, um, pierce and drain. The, uh...
Yeah, we've got that down as number twenty-four. I had put that down in the physical environment and wildlife section, so that's, that is related to this.
Yeah, we're talking about setbacks, so it's just all together.
Yeah, I'm gonna add and water up here, okay? Water drains.
Sue, on that one, I think I make a note. And you asked our consultant what the standard practice is.
Yeah.
That thing on your video a couple of times.
Yeah.
You know, we should not say six hundred feet is the standard, let's say statewide is thousand feet or vice versa.
Right, yeah, gotcha.
They should give us good advice on that.
Yeah. Because as we know, standards change every time. And with the, um, pierce and drain particularly, we want Brenda Moore involved, anyway, so. Okay. Anything more on setbacks from non-participating properties? There was a suggestion that we have the same setbacks for participating properties as we do for non-participating. Did you, anybody catch that in any way? Okay.
I think it's a good idea.
So we'll talk to the consultant about that. Because participating today doesn't mean...
Well, but then you, you buy the property knowing what's there.
Well, we all know that kids play baseball in their backyard.
Kids? My brother just...
They need a little buffer because that ball's gonna hit a panel and it's gonna be a mess.
Okay, number nine is a biggie. Have you all given any thought to this in the meantime?
Yeah.
Did, did anybody come up with any numbers or...
I think it could be consistent with the rest of the township.
Like, um, the built environment percentage of the lot?
What's that, twenty percent?
That's in residential. We don't have that same thing in any other but residential, though, I don't think.
Is there any kind of generality that can be derived from sizes of solar arrays in other townships?
Oh, we can, yeah, we can set, we can try any percentage we want.
Right, no, I, I know, but if, if there was some, um, in general, within townships in Michigan, they seem to occupy X percent, that kind of thing.
Okay.
You know, we just want to be township.
Yes.
You know?
Well, and, and that's such a bad example of everything we think about.
It's true.
The state had one property owner, no ordinance at all, so...
Right, true.
We got to do a lot more than anywhere else we'd be able to do. Okay.
Sue?
Yes?
I have one here. I put a little bit of work and mathematics into this. Unfortunately, what he's assuming is that, I shouldn't say he, but the person is assuming that the electricity is going to be staying here in the township. So they did a calculation of what they felt would be a reasonable size, and he said multiple fifty acres in the size of the solar arrays.
A maximum, did you?
Multiples of fifty. In other words, do fifty now and then do fifty later. But again, it's, it sounds like he was trying to consider it to be enough to cover all the electricity usage in the township. So it's, he did the math for it, but I don't think he's using the right premise.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it goes into the grid.
Goes into the grid, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus which?
Yeah, I had a similar comment.
Yeah.
We can't, we don't have any control over that.
No, once those electrons start moving, that's where they end up. Okay, so we're gonna ask our, our consultant about, um, a standard, if there's any standard been developed. And we're looking at percentage of parcel or, um, rather than kilowatt generation? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that seems to make sense in terms of potential increasing efficiencies.
Yeah, then, yeah. Okay. How about distance between installations? We want to refer back to the standard. I noticed one township did use that, at least one township uses that.
Sue?
Yeah?
Again, this one says that, uh, he's quoting Webster's dictionary for the definition of a farm.
Oh.
The suggestion was that, "Solar panels may be installed adjacent," this presumably goes into the ordinance this way. "Solar panels may be installed adjacent to house and barn, and there are to be no public roads passing through a solar installation." Which makes it awful difficult.
I don't think you can do that.
Again, that's, we're supposed to be discussing people's opinions.
Right, right, right.
Are you saying you don't think it's physically possible, engineering-wise possible, or legally possible?
Basically saying that it can only be on one parcel, it can't be a road. I mean, our lots, our plots out here are one mile by half mile. So the, what that suggestion would be is that the solar array can only be within that, otherwise it's going to be going through a road.
Self-contained.
Yeah.
If that gets to the question, you know, all these discussions are good about limiting the size of the solar installation, but I think you have to be very careful about talking relative to a parcel versus whatever you want to call the current environment, where they at least, at least ten large segments of land. Now, I think you have to come up with some way of limiting the number of solar panels or the density... or the density of the solar panels within that contamination of your property. It's no longer a single parcel, it's 10, 15, 20 parcels that have been linked together to generate a solar installation.
Yeah, it would have to be, in this instance, other, in an instance of multiple property owners, it would, what we're talking about would reflect an individual property owner's percentage.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, I'm just thinking about the situation we have right now, and we have to look at two elements. One is an individual parcel per se, which is relatively simple.
Right.
We have a 20% rule right now about what you can put onto a parcel.
In residential, yeah.
Residential, but we're not dealing with that potentially. We're dealing with a large amount of property, all linked together via leasing agreements. So, and I do think we ought to come up with some way of limiting the amount of space that can be used for a solar farm or for solar panels, relative to the size of the parcel we're talking about. It's not one parcel now, it's multiple parcels linked together.
Right, right, so you could calculate it per parcel. I mean, I think it can be done, but I think that's a good question for the consultant about the effectiveness of it, yeah, and the application of it.
As long as we're going down that way, then should we not consider the size of the township versus what the percentage of coverage of the whole township is in relationship to what is standard practice throughout the rest of the state or even the country? This is a small township.
Yeah.
So to have a very, very large one in relationship to the other ones is not appropriate.
Well, that's the, and that is indeed the challenge about coming up with a percentage, yeah, so.
I mean, I, I don't think it's our responsibility to try to achieve their outcome of 200 megawatts.
No, no.
That's not our problem.
We are not talking about any proposal right now, just our...
No, same.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, someone I have that is related to this is citing substations and structures, the furthest distance from roads and residences. So that within the whole solar energy system project, the structures would be toward the most remote portion of the lot project.
That might tie into reducing overall decibel levels, too, I mean, in terms of the inverters.
Mm-hmm. And we already have, oh, that was it. I notice our existing ordinance right now does talk about decibel levels, but it doesn't, I gotta look here. I don't think it says where that decibel level is measured from, so.
Yeah, it's 45.
Uh-huh, but does it say at what distance or whatever? So I, I would personally like to add that in there. Down to number 11. I did not even know this was possible until the public hearing. I was so lucky to hear.
This that you gave me spends probably a good third page talking about it. And you can argue for something like that, but basically the proposal for this was that it's only good for 10 years after the solar company got permission. The owner could only do it one time.
You've got the copy I was looking for, okay.
You can only do it one time, and if they take your house off the market, then wait 10 years, it's not applicable. Also, it's non-transferable.
It, it is, I mean, we could use something like that, but what I think I hear you saying is that it doesn't provide as complete a coverage as, I mean, it doesn't last, for one thing, the estimated lifespan of the project.
Right, you don't get a 30-year window.
Yeah.
Like I'm saying, you get the first 10 years, after that, who knows, there's a lot of variables that can cause the property to decrease in value.
Yeah, yeah. So do we, do we want to consider putting something like that in our amendments?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Well, you've got that, and that remains a concern for people in towns, so there could be something in there.
Okay. May I, may I borrow that just a moment?
By all means, let me find it.
Make a note to myself where exactly that is, because that's something we'll want to bring up with the consultant.
It's right here, start your page nine.
Yeah, I want to see the front page, I want to see who it came from. All right. Yeah.
Okay, that's all I'm gonna write, is to see her. I knew somebody was gonna send that.
They also give the distance. The first sentence is the SEF affidavit shows that there will be no loss of real property value for any property within 1,000 feet of the SEF.
Yeah, so it's not like the whole township is...
No, there is not a blank check.
Of course, in our township, it might be.
You have a distance, and you have a time, and you have non-transferability.
Yeah, yeah. Which I think might get back to that reasonable issue. Okay.
It offers some protection, it's limited protection, but it's not a blank check.
Right, and it, and should something go horribly wrong, it's, you're probably gonna know it sooner than later, and so.
I mean, they, the author of this...
Is that a township out east?
Yes, it's a town in New York. It was written by a physicist, and she sent, she sent some bullet points, but she also sent the sample ordinance. And it's about definitions, body, and appendices, about 17 pages long.
Well, that's, and that would be something for our attorney to look at, to see if it's legal to do that in Michigan, since that's from New York. But that's the type of thing we would like to add. Okay, number 12. We have something in the ordinance right now about pre-approval for the roads, and I think that they have to fix the roads if they're damaged.
Yeah, that sounds familiar. Referencing, we have to do those suggestions, but that sounds familiar.
Susan, I'm sending that ordinance to you.
Oh, great, thank you.
And to everyone again.
Thank you.
For your information.
Why can't I?
Well, my memory of that was that it was connected to the issue of if a business were to go bankrupt, then what happens to any kind of financial security for decommissioning, for upkeep, for...
So, so that is about the project, an SES, their own liability.
Right.
Requiring them to carry liability.
I'm pretty sure that's what the concern was.
Okay. I didn't know if it was for members of the public. Okay, all righty.
It's actually both, really.
Oh, yeah, I can see, it could be both, I'm just trying to remember the context in which it came up.
I don't know if we have anything like that in the ordinance right now. The financial securities we talk about in the existing ordinance mostly has to do with decommissioning and cleaning, keeping the place, making...
I mean, I don't know how, how the financial instruments would actually work, but I think the idea was, let's just have all the money in the bank, you know, that kind of idea.
Right.
If anything happens, all the money in the bank.
Right.
The consultant will know more about it immediately.
Yeah, so this is not another escrow account. I mean, if they, if they showed a certificate, their insurance saying that they have it, doesn't have it. Like when you get a car license plate, right?
This was back a few years, but there was a gentleman that got killed snowmobbing across Dupont's property.
Oh.
And the deep pockets went deep. I don't know if it got down into the township at that time, but I do know that there were several entities that were all sued from that. So I think if there's injuries or something through, who knows, kids going on a property during construction, whatever, the township should be made safe from that.
Yeah.
And we're not involved in that, somehow.
I think that comes up later, liability, liability charges. But yes.
But that's something that...
Yeah, protects the township from lawyers.
Lawyers can negotiate.
Okay. Number 14, I found quite fascinating, and I'm wondering how, if that's legal.
That's another consultant question.
It sure is. I like the idea of it.
Well, during that presentation, did they not say that their solar panels are all going to come from Ohio?
We're not talking about a particular project.
I understand that, but using that as an example.
Please say, as an example.
I beg your pardon.
Thank you, Dan. The, well, I know certain public entities require, have in the past required locally-sourced materials and labor, but I think this goes beyond that to where the company is registered, where they're licensed, where their financial headquarters is. So, again, and if we want to do that, that's another question for...
Yes, I have, your son liability, correct?
No, we're done on number 14.
No, I lost, got lost there.
Sorry, the problem.
I was just gonna say that the liability puts, the township is the kind of administrator. If you have a claim, you go to the township.
And that's what we don't want.
You don't want.
Nope. Number 15, I don't know how we would do that by way of ordinance exactly. Let's, let me see, we could, we could require a private investigation as part of the requirements?
Well, again, you know, that was, this, the background for that was making sure that all, all the financial responsibilities would be kept. I mean, that's what it's linked to, so in and of itself specifically, I don't understand the matter.
Well, it's important for us to do a due diligence to make sure that it's a viable country, company to begin with.
Yeah, but I would have, I guess I would have assumed that would have happened anyways.
Pardon?
I mean, I would have assumed that would have been a baseline piece anyways.
If, if a company were to meet all the other requirements, I don't know if we could say, oh, it seems like you're a fly-by-night organization, so.
I don't think that would be a question for Cliff, because that's, that's a big portion of it. We could have a company come in and do its thing, meet all their requirements, and then find out they're a bankrupt company.
Yeah, well, thanks.
You gotta go deep.
Yeah, changed hands in my new township. Okay, so number 16, I think upon, I said it as simply as the notes were written, but from reading somebody's submission, it seems like this is something to do with about discouraging the, a company, the applicant, from challenging the tax assessments after things are constructed, after it's up and gone. Now, I, I don't know enough about assessment process and taxation to be able to say.
I had one person that wanted to be cast as industrial land, not agriculture land, if there's a solar land.
Yes, that is indeed related. Yeah, I think it's out of our hands.
It is out of our hands.
It's out of our hands, yeah, okay.
That's determined by either the state or by the county. I think that question might have come up because there was a installation down over, I believe it was a solar install, not a solar area, wind installation on the other side of the state that went in, and they had, they had to pay certain amounts of taxes to the school and different things. Well, the, they went to court and challenged their taxation and won, so all the entities had to pay the taxes back, but the money was already spent. So the school system is now bankrupt, and among the other things, too.
Consumers did indeed, he jumped in on that.
Yeah, so that's what happened there, but that was a wind turbine thing, so. But that, that could happen, but I don't know how you protect yourself against that.
So we also have the chance that there is taxation set, and then the state changes taxation.
The law, the state.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if we have an agreement, then they fight it.
Yeah. Do we set taxation, or does the...
County.
Well, the county does, but if we have a pre-existing agreement about taxation, how good is it on the paper that it's on if the state changes the rules?
Well, it's like, I guess you, you do the best you can with the status and, yeah, if it doesn't. So, okay, a question for the attorney. Confirming that decommissioning has an adequate monetary value, number 17. I think that we have a formula and a review process for doing that. I think that we have a formula and a review process for doing that.
That would be a consultant thing. I'm pretty sure they'd have much more information about that than what is customary.
I believe why our ordinance that we already have is that there's a third party mutually agreed upon that will come to a decision on that.
Yeah, and it's reviewed every five years, so, okay. Oh, now, this next one, I, number eighteen, I scratched my head over because I would, I guess there's, there's two kinds of, well, there's probably more than two kinds. But I think what the person was suggesting is that it not be an insurance bond, like that the applicant would be paying a certain amount of money to an insuring agency that would come through if the applicant doesn't. Does that make sense? And so the suggested person is saying, make sure there's cold cash in the bank, not accept a bond from an insurance company. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I don't know what, what our, if our ordinance makes that distinction. I mean, to me, an escrow account means the money is there. Am I wrong?
No.
Well, for decommissioning, though, you know, ours is a mixture of different things. One of them is...
Hold the value of the scrap?
Yeah.
The salvage.
I guess I'm a little confused with that. Explain that one to me. If we're decommissioned, if the thing is being decommissioned, why are we even involved in...
We're not normally, but if something would happen, if the, if the company went bankrupt or left or whatever, there's, there's money set aside as well as it would be reduced by how much the landowner, because this is all these land here we're talking about, would be entitled to because of the scrap value on his land. That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, whatever components can be sold as salvage.
Either way, it has to be taken care of, but that's how that formula is.
It's allowing, actually, what we're doing is allowing for a salvage value. It's not the ideal, but...
Okay, I got you.
And this says, and I think this is what the person who made the comment has a problem with is, applicant, da-da-da-da-da, posed for the township a decommissioning security in the form of a letter of credit, a charity bond, or similar monetary guarantee. And so I think that this person was cautioning about a similar monetary guarantee and not a line of credit, because a line of credit can disappear. So.
Yeah, there were several comments regarding the language used for finances. You know, there were specific examples of changing May to Shal.
Yeah.
There were several comments of tightening up the language.
So we're gonna, we're going to check with our attorney about this.
The other ideas that came up before we leave this list were, which would go under, maybe go under property values, was the idea of royalties.
Royalties.
Was the idea of, could other residential property tax, could residential property taxes be lowered because of the new tax base? I have no idea whether that could be possible.
That's, yeah, that's not up to us again.
And then going back to the...
If it's possible, it would happen, but...
Going back to the restrict commercial installation. The other idea that it tied into was if there was a, if things went to a court case, that that court case would then be able to happen in Michigan, or at least in the United States.
Yeah, and I think that was the person's concerns, that if the country, I mean the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
So that gets back to number fourteen.
Correct.
I mean, the same intent.
Yeah.
All right. Physical environment and wildlife. I think nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two all are wrapped up in that environmental impact statement, yes.
If, I may add, number twenty.
To number twenty?
They were worried about animals there?
Yeah, particularly bees, because we had, we had suggested that pollinators be required.
Yeah, but also, I'm, I'm wondering about, is there going to be an effect on cell phone service?
Oh, I see, in addition to the animals, okay.
I'm thinking in addition to that.
Yeah.
Because like, you know, when I drive through Whitehall, you know, my truck radio doesn't work right. You know, you lose service, whether it's due to the, their power grid or security systems or what, I don't know, some type of interference. I didn't know if this would also happen. I have no idea.
Yeah, we certainly don't want to interfere with the Coast Guard. Okay, do you think nineteen through twenty-two, with the addition of what Craig just said, is comprehensive enough to cover...
I didn't see anything additional to it.
Okay. Number twenty-three, pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I saw that on a lot of different ones.
Twenty-two, yeah.
As well as twenty-four.
Yeah. I guess number twenty-five, throughout SES installation, probably should include operation as well.
I have a question.
Yeah.
This is going back to between nineteen and twenty-two. That tower, the radio tower from the Coast Guard. Would this affect the efficiency of the Coast Guard tower?
That's why I mentioned, yes.
Yeah.
The Coast Guard tower.
And they just put a radio station transmitter on that tower too. And would it affect the...
Okay.
I'm sorry?
Is it, what kind of radio station is it?
The one that they wanted to put on the Little Tower at Dela Street. A cumulus, I think it's a cumulus radio station. Probably rock and roll.
I think for number twenty-five and twenty-six, Brenda would probably, Brenda Moore probably has something to do with that, wouldn't she?
Yeah, and...
And that bad.
And soil conservation. And...
And FEMA identified, well, she, she would have her finger on the pulse there.
Hey, speaking of which, did you all notice there's another training coming up?
Yeah, I see it.
In the floodplain, how to interpret the floodplain maps or whatever. Did you go to that years and years ago?
Yep.
Okay, I think they're doing that again.
Would be interesting.
Okay.
When Georgia I went last time, they cut it short because of a hurricane that occurred on floodwater.
FEMA, FEMA is always on call. Do you remember that Patty, did you forward it to me? Did I forward it to her?
I forwarded everything. I don't read at all. I can't. There's not enough time in the day.
In regards to number twenty-four?
Yeah.
It was just announced yesterday, two days ago, that in 2015, Obama put restrictions on any construction in drain fields and flood areas. During the Trump administration, he overturned that. And on December twenty-ninth, Biden redid it.
Oh, okay.
So there is, according to federal law now, or federal rules, where you can't put construction in drain field or flood areas.
So I'm gonna...
Potentially areas.
I'm gonna...
So I don't know how that new rule will affect that.
Yeah, I imagine, but that's something we should check on.
Could I just, that request just a moment, did that also include the whole thing of navigable waters?
It went all the way down to stormwater drains. So anything that's got standing water or moving water is impacted by it.
Because that was part of the reason we, we did the fearsome drains thing, is because of the, the laws that were enacted.
So I don't know if we have to include that or not, but it's something we should talk to Cliff about.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, yeah, if, if we're using Brenda as a resource for protection of fearsome drain. Okay. Number twenty-seven was new to me, new to our ordinance altogether.
Oh, before we go, before we leave physical environment, I didn't see the idea of, maybe this could go in the impact, heat elements.
I think I'd put microclimate somewhere.
Okay, yeah, you do have microclimate and snow drifting. That was, I said that.
Number twenty-one, yeah.
Yeah.
Soil changes and water holding capabilities with the increased pH.
And the contamin, you know, potential contamination from broken panels, or any contamination from building.
I think that we have number twenty-nine, which talks about toxic waste runoff, sound levels, wildlife impact.
And we should put the batteries in there? Any battery, I understand that the way a solar installation works is they, if they have more energy than the grid can take, they store it in batteries, and what happens if the battery explodes?
That was part of twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
Well, it's also...
But I mean, I don't...
Toxic waste runoff, because those batteries are...
Yeah, I think, I mean, we can, we can say the word battery, I, I'm thinking that it's part of the system, so we necessarily have to point it out, but... Only because then we'd be listing everything individually. And then we forgot to list something.
Claire isn't specifically mentioned, but that could go under health and safety.
We already have a Blair thing.
Oh, true, true.
Yeah.
Yeah, just listed as all equipment.
Pardon?
Just listed as all equipment. No rattling, standing individual.
Right. Yeah, all components.
You know, we might want to...
Thank you.
Yeah, I betcha.
We might have to, I don't know how to say this, require when they come in and inspect the different things, or a house inspection.
Inspection schedule?
Something like that, because I was over at the Segway site, and I was just trying to ascertain, you know, noise and things like that. And they had one whole bank of panels that the snowdrift had landed on, and it couldn't tilt, it was locked. And then they had several panels that were broken and hanging there. But it was interesting, because I couldn't, I stopped and sit in the road, and I, I could have some noise there, but then I drove around to Master Tax, probably in trespass.
No, Jeff told me you got permission.
Well, that was, anyway, so, anyway. And it was much quieter over there, so I really couldn't tell how much of that was electrical noise and how much of it was wind noise going through the installation.
Well, that's why I think we need to, to state where we're gonna, where the decibel
Yeah, I'm just...
recording is taken.
Yeah, but I was curious, because obviously no one had been out to check, or something involved. Nobody been out to check the panels or anything in mind.
Well, I think we have two, two aspects. We have, we have a maintenance plan already in our zoning ordinance, and we suggested some change for that. But then also, what has come to our attention is how we will have to do our own routine inspections. So we have increased inspection requirements. We have the, we have the right to inspect the premises at all reasonable times. The township may hire a consultant to assist with any inspections at the operator's expense. And if they, if we, the township determines any part of the water energy system fails to comply, they shall be repaired or modified promptly, and failure to do so will be a material and significant violation. So I think we have that in there. It would just be on the... So we require a maintenance plan, and I think that gets reviewed. Does it get reviewed every now and then? Maybe not.
I, annually, I would.
But what we're adding is that the township has the right to go in and inspect it and to, to make sure that the maintenance plan is being carried out. Now, if Mariupol Township had had that, they would have had somebody hired by the township going in and finding those things out. We might have that covered.
Yeah, I, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah, no, very good, because like I say, poor Mariupol Township, you can point to them for all sorts of lessons. Unfortunately.
I don't recall on the PM that is in our ordinance now, but I don't recall it saying that there's a report that should be submitted to the township, that PM is done.
No.
No inspection.
It doesn't. Not even, not even in our amendment proposal, so.
We should be on file that these inspections are being done.
Like a compliance report?
Yeah, just that...
Is that what you'd call that?
Yesterday, they did the inspection. These are the things that are, have been found to be in violation, and these are the dates that the things will be corrected.
Yeah, now, on, on government projects where they're contracted out, any government inspector would go in and have access to their maintenance record, their maintenance log, so.
Yeah, I'm just referencing the way we handle it, so that you would have a timeframe of these violations, or minimal ones, whatever, light bulbs out, that might be replaced by such and such time, and then our inspector, whoever that may be, will go in and see if they were done.
Yeah.
Follow up on it.
Okay, add that in here.
Do we know if there's a noise to the moving of the panels? And can we put in our ordinance that they only fix so that they don't break? I can't imagine, you know, the rotating things, there's so many moving parts, and the more moving parts you have, the more problems you end up with.
I don't know if we can dictate stationary installation. That would be a question. I don't think the movement of them would be, would exceed the decibel level. would exceed the decibel level, but from a possibility of failure, mechanical failure.
And where are they getting the power to make those move?
Just like, just like everybody uses power. I mean, it's gotta be a two-way thing, yeah.
Seems like it would be more expensive.
Solar installations must, they must calculate somehow the, what they're getting back. I mean, they're covering the costs and they get a profit if they're doing the business, I imagine, so.
But the ones that I've seen in the Sunshine State were fixed. The ones that are down at Kalamazoo are fixed.
Well, you want to check out that, is that Kalamazoo a public utility one? Does the city of Kalamazoo own it, do you think?
I think it's Western Michigan University owns it.
Could you, could you look into seeing if they, oh, well, they, if Western Michigan University owns it, they may have made that determination on their own, not had it imposed as an ordinance restriction. So that's a question.
Well, maybe the consultant will know.
Yeah. Nathan, you gotta know everything, Nathan. He's not here to defend himself. Okay, number 30. I don't have a problem with it. I don't, I don't think there's anything in our ordinance right now that limits the time that an installation can be operated, a lifespan.
I think there would have to be some type of wording determining what type of installation you're going to do to continue.
Yeah, and we do have that in our new suggestion Oh, if it is, it's in increased inspection requirements and is that amended? Further, if it is determined that the solar energy system has been expanded or modified without the prior approval of the township, okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. That's written backwards, but I thought that we somehow allowed in there. Well, no, I guess our concern at that time was if they do a shutdown and restart up, they would only be doing that because of something significant. So what they would have to do to do a, what was the term? A rehabilitation would be to come back to the township with plans for changing out equipment, because a site, as I'm interpreting it right now, site plan review by the township would be specific to the equipment and the setup. So if they wanted to change out to the extent that it meant constructing something new or modifying it to a certain extent, then they'd have to come back and get approval. Number 31, I think if we asked the consultant about that, that profile design, because that seemed to affect a lot of the actual construction style. Okay, lead standards for waste stream. I don't know what those are, but we'll find out.
I think those are kind of best practices.
Yeah, I forget what lead stands for right now, but we don't have anything in our ordinance right now that would designate how waste is to be dealt with other than to take it off-site. So we've had a suggestion that we require components and waste be recycled in the U.S. So I think...
I think the thought behind that was just don't bring them down to Attig and drop them.
I, I think it's, it's morally a very good thing. I, I don't know if legally we can require that. Again, when public funds are used, a lot of restrictions and criteria can be placed on it, but this is not public funding, so it's all private funding. Okay. I think number 36 is out of the question. Number 35, we've discussed already taking, going through and looking where that, where may should be replaced, to show. I need, I need a bit of a restroom break. You all decide what you want to do next, okay? I'm out of ideas for today.
Well, I think I have some pretty good notes. I will write this out and send it out. If anybody can make suggestions and corrections as I put them forward.
So do, do we feel like we've reviewed the, to the best of our ability, we've reviewed all the suggestions?
Yeah, I have the list and I can add the things that we put on there. And then when we meet with the consultant. Well, what we can do is, once we have agreed that this is what we have, we can send it to the consultant and he can do, or he, I think it's gonna be named. He can look at it, determine what's legal, what's not.
Right, right, exactly.
And then when he meets with us, he won't be blindsided by...
Right.
All of our questions.
Yeah, exactly.
Do I need all of those letters?
Yeah, there is a lot of them, yes.
The ones that were passed out?
Yeah, all of the letters that were passed out, I need them.
Oh, good.
Thank you. The ones that they passed out, all of the ones that we could look at, what we want.
I appreciate it. I'm gonna put checkmarks on these.
Says that you can use them. Otherwise I would think...
Oh my goodness, I missed one.
Oh, I need to ask if there's anything that wasn't passed out, but you all found. I'm sorry. Anything that didn't fall into these categories that you found?
No, actually not.
I'm not accepting resignations at this time.
Did you say you are, or you don't?
I am not.
Okay, anybody who received all of the handouts, if you would kindly make, give them, oh, is it higher the folder?
Oh, all right.
Yeah, where we return the letters.
They have to go in that folder.
You mean all the, all these handouts?
Not all the, that, that comments, the suggestions that you went through of other people's.
Right, and they had, there were letters of them with their names, who's handing them?
Oh, you did already, yeah.
Why do you want to go on and request them?
Okay.
It looks like Bob's got some, Craig, will you take them?
You got it. I want to have that and I can give you back.
I got these. These are back in my bag.
I have this, but there's nothing with it.
These are, they came out there, just looking at it.
Attached to six items in there.
Just this one's the only one that's true. These two.
Your one and your two.
This is, this is one too.
Okay, so some of these, there's a couple of...
The tech was back to...
What were we looking for?
Back to...
She's going to do the same on, or we set this up? Yeah, she did, but...
Okay. There it is.
Go ahead and work on the lighting.
This is, that's a lot of coverage restrictions showing that apply to portable tanks. And that's giving to the plan. Our multiple copies, yeah, okay. Where are those coming from? Energy needs.
Correct.
Right?
What I do what?
Guilty.
I'm embarrassed.
Forgot the little name.
Where did Dell staff the stuff home?
Me, I'll go through.
I turned them in.
Sorry.
I already turned them in.
You know, I think that's...
Yeah, I just gave you a couple of cups. I didn't... These are just electric panels that you guys...
Well, yeah, we have to give more information that everybody talked about. These are all the copies, yeah.
Oh. I could put them to...
This is just a work session.
Next thing we'll talk about, what are the steps?
Yeah, within our purview.
What else do you want to do today?
Well, we were just discussing that in, in terms of today, since I asked, I asked a question. I think that we feel that we've gone through all the, all the suggestions that were brought to us.
Yeah.
We compiled a lot, a list of questions for our consultant and for Cliff.
Yeah.
We have an upcoming meeting with the consultant.
Yeah. We do not know exactly when. I asked for a specific date and time.
Right, right, he hasn't responded yet.
And he hasn't been able to respond yet.
So do we need to do any, you know, we have a couple of sentences, a sentence, maybe two sentences for each piece that Patty will send on to Patty and or whomever will send on to Cliff and the consultant, but do we need to do any fleshing out of those? You know, like...
I don't think so. I think we need to, in my opinion, get Nathan's verbiage.
Yeah, yeah, I would say so.
Yeah. And then it will be the items that require numbers. We should, for defensibility, look at standards where there are some.
Right, right.
And that someone will rely on Nathan's core. So...
So I'm sure she was waiting on her counsel and the planner for more information and...
The planner, yeah, yeah. In my, in my humble opinion, is that what you all say?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah, we're on the same page with that, okay. We are still taking comments, written, emailed comments. 13, Friday the 13th. And it's also a full moon, I think.
I think that's the sixth, that's the guy.
And when, when those come in, I'll just incorporate them. If any more come in, I'll, I'll check them against the list that we worked from today.
Okay.
And add them. And then the public hearing is the 12th, right? January 12th is only about the moratorium. So we have the high school cafeteria and I will instruct people that they have about 30 seconds to speak only to the moratorium. So any other comments that would like, people would like to make in general, just keep sending them to the township hall because we have to, our focus is on the ordinance moratorium. And we have copies of that language here today, somewhere. So I'm saying it's loud enough for everybody in the room to hear me, even though it's a silent meeting.
Hey, Paul?
Pardon?
Did you give the time when you said it's not...
You'd be there at 6:30. The public hearing starts at 7:00.
Okay.
Okay. We'll, we'll ask people to write their name and address and whether they're a township resident or not on a, if they'd like to speak, so we have an idea of how many people. Because we're renting the facility, we can't really go over the time limit. I will double check about that, but...
And I would suggest everybody write down their comments and make them as brief as possible so that we can hear and then we'll ask people that agree to stand so that we don't have to hear it over and over and over.
We're gonna have to have a, I've asked for a microphone. So Don, do you want to be timekeeper again?
You have a hard, hard quit time of 8 o'clock, isn't it?
Out of there, yeah, yeah, at a time of 8:00, yeah.
So the quit time should be before that.
Out of there is 8:30. Oh, okay. But we've got to wrap it up so we can clean it up.
Yeah, very true. I'll entertain a motion.
Hold on a second. This is gonna be an attempt and I'll probably mess it up as usual, but first thing I think it's important, some of the things I've learned, just nosing around where I probably shouldn't. But I do think that whether we like it or not, we are a test case, all right? You can call it what's gonna happen if, what's gonna happen if not. But I'm concerned that the LLC is already in the process of going to the state of Michigan and proposing something similar to what they did with A, what is it, Air A and B? Or they're saying, okay, folks, you didn't respond, correct me to people that came forward with legitimate requests to do something, therefore we're gonna take over responsibility for that. I can't guarantee that. I haven't verified that anything yet at the state level, but I've got a sneaking suspicion that that is what is going on. And when you think about the statements that have been made about the robustness of our ordinance as it exists right now, repeatedly by the LLC people, it looks to me like that's what's happening. We shouldn't stop what we're doing, don't get me wrong. We should continue our efforts to spool it up that ordinance as much as possible. The other thing is just, and this is just my summary of what I think I heard today, I heard back in the December twentieth meeting. And my first statement, it was not meant to be negative, but a lot of the issues we had initially were okay, but not in my backyard. That's my summary, all right? I don't have a problem with solar, I think it's a good idea, but boy, don't put it in my backyard, all right? Beyond that, I think a lot of things have come up and you guys have done a fantastic job trying to summarize all of these things. A lot of those are questions which eventually are gonna start going to the consultant, but are gonna go immediately from the consultant to legal counsel. Because I think there were things talked about today that we talked about, you guys talked about legitimately so, but they're not your privy, all right? You don't have the option to exercise some of the things that were brought up. And we have to get a clear statement legally from our attorney, what's gonna happen and not happen. So, other than that, my take is keep going, folks. Patty, don't accept any resignations, 'cause I don't want to be rude.
No! No resignations.
Um, I'll just, in a little bit of a response, George, I, I have heard that very same thing about legislation. That, um, yeah, it's like mining, it's very, you can't prohibit mining and right to fire. I mean, yeah.
We can't do anything about that, all right? But we have to get our-
The laws change, yeah.
Get our rules down as, as specifically and finitely as possible.
All we know is the moment, yeah, yeah.
I call it fine tuning.
Well, I would love to close this meeting.
Would you?
I'll support.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning the, no, this is not a, this is a work session. All in favor of adjourning the work session?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you got a comment you wanna make?